For litter pluck. That's been canceled. With our census. The last time I reported on the census. We were at approximately an 18% return rate. As of today, we're at 23.9%. So we've still got a large push for the people to make sure that they get their census back in. Especially now, I think the extra funding that is a result of that census is going to certainly be something that we need. Tustin Hope, for those that don't know, there is a an assist to the food pantry. TustinHope.com is delivering to house or not delivering to households or allowing households. One bag of groceries per week per household. There be distributed every Tuesday between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM in the morning. Done here by the Narrowsburg Inn. For people that are in need, or if you know people that are in need. You can reserve online at TustinHope.com. For those that don't have the ability to get into the internet. A phone number of 845-252-3071. Will get you to either Rick or Elaine. They will be able to assist you. You have to register to reserve for the week before that Tuesday. And larger families may reserve more depending on the size. And we'll get that up also on the town website. For correspondence, the only correspondence we have right now is from the Upper Delaware Council. And it's referenced the 2020 River Cleanup Grants. Which will be number eight in our new business. And it tells us the timeline for the applications being May 22nd. Reviewing the applications for May 26th. And funding recommendations for a vote by the full council on Thursday, June the 4th. We'll have that under new business. Our expenditures for March of 2020. General expended $63,446. Highway expended $44,312. Water expended $13,357. Sewer expended $15,915. And the lighting district $468. Very total of $137,501. The bills have been reviewed by the auditing committee for the month. And look for a motion to pay the bills as were presented.
I moved.
Second.
I got a motion from Jill and a second by Jane. Is Bruce on with us yet? Okay. Jane? Yes?
Yes.
Randy?
Aye.
Jill?
Yep.
And I. Division reports. The Town of Tustin Highway report. Used 860 gallons of diesel fuel, 777 gallons for highway and 82 was non-highway. Used 278 gallons of gas, 76 was highway, 202 was non-highway. Patched holes on dirt and paved roads, put winter weight restriction signs on roads. Prepare trucks and snow removal equipment after storms. They cut trees on Gables, Swamp, Pond, Brook and Perry. Clean snow from around town, clean frozen drain pipes on the roads. And continued with their snow removal. I do not have the water and sewer report filed yet. The building department. Okay, I'll be right back with my building one. The assessors report for March. During the month of March, processing of the exemptions for aged agriculture and forest were processed and updated on the computer. Files were readied for fieldwork and several days were spent measuring new construction for the 2020 tax roll. Work on up property record cards and valuation was also begun. There was no Sullivan County Associations. Meeting for the assessors as a social distancing came into play before the meeting's date. I have not been keeping normal hours at the town hall since Monday evening, March the 16th. Phone messages were changed to direct callers to the my home. Some have done so and a solitude has given me the chance to do the work on the tax roll. And there is no report from the building department due to the COVID-19 and the department essentially being closed. Other than checking on construction sites if we receive any information about construction. It's not approved. Upper Delaware Council is our representative. Oh, Bruce is there. Okay. Our council conducted its April meeting via telephone conference due to the coronavirus rules. Grants as far as known, Tustin is on schedule for its tag grants. And the complaint committee is met with Jennifer Cluster from the National Park Service. And so are clear on the requirements of the river management plan. Lori Ramey sent an email regarding the river cleanup grants. River Sweep Dan Paparella will continue to update website and Facebook pages for Upper Delaware cleanup and prevention project. Five year strategic plan retreat currently planned for Saturday, May 30th. At Damascus Manor Community Center. Facilitated by Buck Morehead. If holding retreat is not possible, the UDC will meet the five-year budget deadline. And the in-person retreat will be rescheduled. The annual awards banquet is currently scheduled for June 7th at the Central House in Beach Lake. And today, the Delaware Basin Commission. From them, the Delaware has been named River of the Year for 2020. Randy with the Energy Committee?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Yeah. So the LED streetlights, after pressing NiSEG to replace two streetlights that they had removed for a period of one and two years. Armature and all. NiSEG installed two new armatures at Route 97 and 52, as well as the one on Bridge Street near School Street. They will do for now, but they're all, one of them is only half the length of a standard armature. And I heard back from NiSEG today and they're replacing that one. We request, I requested them to replace it because it's not an acceptable size to have uniform lights across the whole road. It has to light up the center of the road, not just one side of the road. So within the next couple of months, NIPA is going to come and that's New York Power Authority. They're going to replace all our light bulbs that we all own now with LEDs. And they require that the armatures are the right size. And just a side note, today I got in the mail, I had called the Public Service Commission. And asked them for maybe a rebate because we were being billed for two streetlights that didn't exist for two years. So they're sending a check of $329. They told NiSEG they had to do that. But that's exciting. So um, the town will be closing with NIPA shortly and it'll take one week to replace all the light bulbs with LEDs. And it's a one man crew. Because Governor Cuomo needed funds for his emergency agencies. During the pandemic, he borrowed monies from the NIPA funds that would have covered our smart technology. Adding Wi-Fi to each LED streetlight in town. So our contract's not going to reflect that NIPA is when NIPA is reimbursed by the state, we'll receive the smart technology in the future. They're giving us a grant of $20,000 to cover that. The town owns LED streetlights will yield the savings of $12,000 to $14,000 a year for the town. Soft plastic treks recycling efforts, the collection continues even though Weiss Marcus has suspended drop off at their stores due to the pandemic. Fortunately, our supervisor has allowed the TEC to store the bags of soft plastic in a town building where there's ample space. As not to interrupt a successful effort by the town. And thank you for that, Ben. We will, we'll deliver all, I've been delivering all the oh, I'm sorry, we're going to be delivering all the soft plastic that we collect and store there as soon as they open the program again, whenever that is in the future. Our second treks bench has been delivered to the highway department and will be assembled and placed on the deck shortly, probably next week. Our town has collected 2,925 pounds to date. Thank you. The food scrap digester is moving ahead with the, with the program. Jennifer Porter is completing all necessary paperwork requirements for the New York State DEC. She's documenting all in-kind hours spent on the project. The Center for Eco-Technology has provided educational information to us for our flyers to be handed out at the Narrowsburg Union Farmers Market this summer. If that happens. They've also written detailed instruction, instructional brochures for Tustin food merchants and restaurants. I designed the logo and I've taken all the written material and designed flyers, brochures, a banner and mailers if necessary. All material costs are covered by our grant received when we were certified. A climate smart community and all labor is in-kind services. I also spoke with Michelle Sterling, who's a woman in Scarsdale who heads their food scrap program. She shared all of their resources with the TEC after test marketing product, products like bins, fire degradable liner bags, toders for transport. She's sending us their digester handbook that they created. Cause they're that much further ahead in this process. And she's, they fully endorse our approach. They've understood what we were going to be doing. And they wanted to help us as much as they can. Town of Scarsdale has greatly reduced the volume of their garbage going into the landfill. Methane emissions as well as cost to the residents. And that's it.
Great job, Randy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
You're welcome.
Um, Kathy's down here, is she? Kathy's down here. Okay. No zoning rewrite report. Jane with grants?
Yeah, well, we have several working grants that we're in the process right now. I guess the biggest one is Little Lake Erie. The covert and as everybody knows. Because of the pandemic, we did not have the discussion meeting that was scheduled March 23rd. However, the information was available online. Or you could have gone to town hall, I think as well. And we did receive four comments. I'm delighted about that because I read several of them and they were very good comments and they have been passed on to the engineering firm and the Department of Transportation. So all those comments went through and they're addressing those. I also know that a check was just cut for reimbursement for another part. So that's, everything's working as scheduled there. The other grant is the comprehensive plan grant. And Crystal has been giving me the written surveys that have been received. And I've been putting them into the data into Survey Monkey. And we will have over 300 responses. So I'm pleased with that.
Yeah.
Yes, we mailed out just under 1,300. So 300 responses is good. That's, we're above 20%. And I guess Ben, you're working on the SAM grants, right?
Yes, I was just actually speaking with Jim Crowley from the building department today regarding one of those.
Okay. I do have a question. I guess I should ask Kelly though, and she's not on this, right? Is Kelly on this meeting? I don't think so. But for Sullivan Renaissance, we have to submit the invoice for the generators. They're finished, aren't they? The installation?
No. They're they're, the pad set, lines are run for it. I believe we need just to get the generators because of the pandemic. We've got a little bit of a backlog getting them here.
Okay, so then we haven't received an invoice.
We have, actually, we have a partial invoice that's gone out. So we should be able to at least get you something going.
All right, I'll speak with Kelly and get a copy of that to submit to Renaissance. Okay, I think that's, that's it on grants.
A public comment. For anybody that does wish have any public comment, there should be on the bottom of your screen where you can hit raise hand. You'll be recognized by the town clerk. And if you're on a dial-up, if we use a star nine. Anybody on the phone with a star nine will then be recognized also. Mike, you have a question?
A quick question. What is the status of the hydrant project? And I know they've been working away in town. How far along are they and are they on target?
They are on target. We expect them to be done tomorrow. I do have that under old business. Where I need to advise the board of a couple of things, but it looks like we should be out of there by tomorrow with that.
Excellent.
Any other public comments at all? Steve?
Yes. Regarding the culvert project. First of all, thank you Ben and Crystal for getting that information online. Because I was able to do a complete read through it. What I found, and I submitted this comment, what I found really lacking in the engineer's report is that they paid absolutely no attention to the effect of the 30-inch overflow pipes that former highway superintendent Skip Feagles had placed on either side of the covert of the dam. They, their engineers seem to downplay their effectiveness. In mitigating overtopping of the dam in high water events. Their engineer has never been there in a situation where those culverts have mitigated an overtopping of the dam and a consequent flooding of my, and me and my wife's property, 93 Erie Avenue. Their recommendation is to remove those pipes. And I really would I implore the town to make sure that those overflow pipes are not removed. The last time that Little Lake Erie overflowed and flooded and flooded my wife and my building was in 2006. So that was a 500-year flood. It was an unprecedented event. Since that time, we've had a lot of heavy rainfalls. And I have watched the lake rise and I have seen those overflow pipes keep Little Lake Erie from overtopping the road and consequently flooding the, the lower level of my building. So it's extremely important that those overflow pipes be kept in place. Thank you.
And Jane, we're supposed to get a response on the questions from the engineering company, correct?
Yes, and, and I do know that they are addressing those comments. So yes, we will receive something. But in the meantime, Steve, I think I'll just send a quick email tomorrow to our engineering firm and stressing your comment about do not remove the overflow pipes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, okay.
Nico's got his hand up, so I'm guessing he wants to say something. Yes, Nico?
Yes, so are the engineers gonna, I apologize, it's actually a question, not a comment. Are they gonna investigate Cackle Town Pond during this?
We do want to meet with the engineers prior to any work beginning to check the level of Cackle Town. To determine whether or not they want to change the level there. So that if the level's too high and somewhere to, someone were to breach the Beaver Dam. That it would not create a situation that would cause damage to the work that's being done. Or create a safety issue for the people that are working there. So the intent is to get them to go up there and make a determination what they want done up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comment, we'll move into our old business. Number one under old business is health and safety. Obviously, the pandemic is first and foremost. The town would urge you to keep in touch as things change daily at this point again. Between Tustin.org, SullivanNewYork.us, the CDC.gov. Three places to find a lot of the stuff that we do. We've got the board members and a town clerk with Tustin.org putting on things as they come in. They also are utilizing social media. Social distancing. So if there's any questions, please get hold of the town. There's no lack of information out there, that's for sure. Number two, Wayne Bank parking lot update. Jill?
I am so pleased. Thank you for the ZBA because the variances have passed and the next step is to take it into the get it to the planning board to get the subdivision approved. So I'm very excited and appreciative that we have gotten this moved forward. I was very, very concerned yesterday about the weather and if we had a power outage, we had to put it off again. So boy, am I happy. Thank you guys again. But yeah, so moving forward on that.
Just to tack on to that, we did order a title a while back with county clerk's offices closed. So it's not likely that it's going to get accomplished before, you know, they reopen the government, basically.
Thanks, Danielle.
Uh, number three, Little Lake Erie Culvert update, I think.
We kind of covered that, I think.
Yeah, I think you're good with that, Jane. Thank you. Number five, the parking law.
What happened in number four?
Well, you sound just like Crystal. With the water hydrant, like I said to Mike before. They ran into a little bit of a snag today, but it's not going to put them off of their schedule. They had slated for yesterday, today and tomorrow. They put tomorrow in as an extra day just in case they had an issue. There is an issue with the hydrant, the first one up Bridge Street off of Main. The building on the corner has a wet suppression system in it. Inspection of that system before they cut the water to remove the bad hydrant. Found that the system is not in a condition to be repressurized. So a decision was made that tomorrow they're going to install an extra valve in the off of the main so that the hydrant can be replaced. But the wet suppression, suppression system to that building is not going to be pressurized. Until an inspector comes in, makes sure that the work is done properly. It gets re-inspected. And then re-inspected by the town. So it looks like everything is going to continue on and the hydrant should be working by the end of tomorrow. Any questions from the board on that at all?
No.
Okay. Now, the public hearing for the parking law. We're going to move that off to the June meeting. We're hoping, hopefully by the June meeting that we can do some in-person hearings as opposed to trying to do them over the over the Zoom. So we will bring that back in the May meeting and then do it in June. Danielle, that's what we decided on, right? I don't need
Right, that's something you can schedule that meeting. At the May meeting, you can schedule the public hearing for the June meeting. And just to remind everyone, it's amending the parking to prohibit parking on Bridge Street.
A comprehensive plan survey update?
Well, I did sort of give that report, but just to let everybody know that we extended the deadline. Originally, it was April 3rd, I think, or April 6th that the surveys had to be in, but we extended that till the 15th. And I think that's working because we are getting so many more. It's very interesting when you read the comprehensive plan of comments, you can learn a lot about what, what the town town residents want. And that will be reflected in our comprehensive plan. Okay.
Thank you. Municipal cleanup day. It has been set for Saturday, May the 16th previously from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The county is still going through with it. Some of the things that we've changed as far as that goes is people that are bringing loads to be deposited at the highway barn. There will be no assistance. That whatever you bring, you need to be able to unload yourself. We'll have town highway people there, but they'll be in their own equipment, moving things. So there will be no assistance to the residents that bring stuff there so that we can stay with the social distancing. And be able to still do this. Also this year, no tires are going to be accepted. In the past, we've accepted tires. However, that would require the exchange of money. And with the social distancing, we, speaking with the highway superintendent, he requests that they take the tires out of the equation there. Does the board have any questions regarding the municipal cleanup at all?
I know regarding the cleanup, but you also mentioned litter pluck. What was the date of litter pluck?
That's been canceled.
What?
That's been canceled. That's been canceled at the county level and our level.
Okay, all right.
A new business. And again, as I asked for a motion in a second, if the board member can state their name before either of those. Authorization for the town clerk to advertise spring cleanup for May 16th, 2020 from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I will make the motion. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Jane seconds it. Randy?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Brucey?
Aye.
Brucey.
We're not Gillie or Jamie.
Are Jane and, are Jane and the supervisor voting?
I made the motion.
Yes, I made the motion, so I thought that counted as a vote.
No.
No? Okay, aye.
Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
Number two for the horse. And Danielle, I'll read this whole resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay. A resolution declaring lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. For the Town of Tustin's acquisition and operation of anaerobic digester. The town board of the Town of Tustin duly convened in a regular session this day, April 14th, 2020, is considering the acquisition and operation of an anaerobic digester to be located at the town highway department. The board hereby resolve as follows. Section 1. Pursuant to, in accordance with the provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. The town board of the Town of Tustin hereby makes the following determinations and classifications with respect to the proposed action referenced above. A, the town board hereby determines the action is subject to SECPRA. B, the town board hereby makes a preliminary classification of the action as an unlisted action. C, the town board hereby determines that it is and will be the lead agency with respect to the consideration and environmental review of the proposed action. Section 2, a copy of Part 1 of the environmental assessment form. And a copy of this resolution shall be sent to all involved and interested agencies by the town clerk as required by law. Section 3, the lead agency declaration, subject to agreement of the agencies involved shall become effective 30 calendar days from the date hereof. Fair to object is deemed acquiescence and/or agreement. Section 4, in the event no objection is received from the aforementioned agencies within 30 calendar days. The Town of Tustin Town Board will assume the role as lead agency. I heard of the town board, the Town of Tustin redated this day. A roll call vote, I vote.
You need a motion?
A motion, accept the resolution?
Second.
Second.
Well, Randy made the motion. Jane will second the motion. A roll call vote. Randy?
So move. Oh, aye.
Jane?
I.
Jill?
I.
Brucey?
I.
And I'm an I. Now, as a result of that, number three is we need to set a special meeting. Reference to horse environmental review. The date would be Tuesday, May the 26th, 2020. 6:30 PM. I would make a motion to set a special meeting for Tuesday, May 26th, 2020. Reference to the environmental review for the horse at 6:20 PM. A second to the motion?
Second.
I got Jane for a second. Randy?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Jill?
I.
Jane?
Did you say Jane? Yes.
And I'm an I.
I'm just putting it on the calendar.
Number four is a discussion reference to lawn mowing. In the past, what we have had is an employee by the town that would go out with the town equipment. I'm looking to put this out to bid. Coming up, using some of the older bids that we had put out in the past. Speaking with the board as far as what areas they would like to see included in the bid. At this point, we've got an issue because in using the town equipment. Under the current protocols for COVID-19. We don't have the availability right now of vehicles to put more employees in as we're one, one employee per vehicle. So I think at this point, I would like the board's consideration and I would accept the motion to be able to put out the lawn mowing for the township to bid. If anybody's questions from the board regarding that as far as the stance and the reasoning for it.
This is Jane. I wouldn't call it lawn mowing because it's more than that.
It will be in the bid and I'll, I'll go over a bid that I put together for the, the town.
Okay. The other thing is who will this person report to?
Well, the bid spec's going to list out what his responsibilities are. Any questions that they have or conflicts or need that they could come to the supervisor's office.
So the person reports to you?
They could, but they're going to be followed by a bid spec. So if the bid spec says we need this mode between seven and 10 day, every seven and 10 days that this needs to be done. If, if within the bid spec we put in there, uh, all the trees along Kirk Road need to be weed whacked. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna bid out what they're going to do according to what we want them to do.
Can we see the bid before it goes out so that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that if we have an addition or something, thank you.
And can we specify that it's him or her?
Absolutely. I don't think we specified before, but who, am I using him too much?
Yes.
You just did one time. I caught it.
I be too bad.
Don't you, do you, what I don't understand Danielle, you can help on this. Don't you just advertise or put for a position and then you have a job description?
Well, it depends. It depends if you want to have an employee or an independent contractor. It sounds like you want to have an independent contractor.
Contractor is what I'm looking for. So that we're not, like right now, we need a vehicle to pull the mowing equipment around. Well, the problem is that the highways are one man for one truck. We got two trucks in the Water District with three employees. So our one truck, one man. How long this is going to go? We don't know and.
Or one woman.
Or one woman.
Okay, I get it. All right.
And then, um, you know, you'll have requirements in the bid too, like they have to have their own insurance and workers.
Correct.
All right. So I guess Ben, you're going to write up that, um, the, the bid specs?
Recontact the board members to see, um, like I know that Kirk Road is an issue that you've expressed. I will contact all the board members. I've put one together. Get it out to you guys to look at, make sure it covers what we need and then get it to Crystal.
Okay. The other important issue that I had received complaints about was the mowing should be according to the Little League schedule or the game schedules, if that goes back. Rather than just saying every seven to 10 days, it should be coordinated with the schedule.
We can, we can certainly look at that.
Okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion to authorize the town clerk to advertise for bids for the purposes of on maintenance. These bids to be received by May the 8th. And to set a opening date of May the 11th at 3 PM at 2:10 Bridge Street in the town of Tustin. I will make the motion. I will look for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Second by Bruce. Jane?
I.
And Brandy?
I.
Jill?
I.
Bruce?
I.
And I'm an I. I apologize for that. Uh, number six, the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance, I did receive correspondence from the Arts Alliance. Provision of Delaware Arts Alliance lease agreement for the Tustin Theater is that they can extend five-year lease for one additional year each year. This allows them when they're applying for grants to have a continuous six-year clear lease, which is required by most funding sources. They are asking for the lease be extended to 2027, which would allow for grants applied for in 2020 and funded through 2021, 22 to be within the clear lease parameters. They understand that this extension does not change their, our right to terminate their lease. Any questions on that prior to?
No, I'll move that we extend the DVAA lease one year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second one?
A, Jane?
I.
Jill?
I.
Brandy?
I.
And Bruce?
All right.
Number six, I did have a resident express a desire or a concern that the town have an AED device in our community hall. Not using it much now, but I'm looking for the board's input on that. Um, I could certainly go through our health officer, Colin Peters and see one, if there's any funding available for that, or if it's, uh, something that we would be footing the bill on our own.
Wait a second. I thought that that was funded with money that we got from the Millennium Pipeline or something. Does anybody recall that?
Yeah, I, I do. I thought we had it, uh, an AED.
Yes.
Not even I'm aware of. And in my conversations with the clerk. I have produced one for us that I'm aware of.
I thought we had it. And then there was Danielle, are there any issues, legal issues that if we have it and somebody doesn't know how to use it and uses it improperly, then we're liable or something, something came up.
Yeah, I think that you need to make sure people are trained in how to use it. What I would suggest is maybe go through your old minutes and see what, um, you know, with respect to the Millennium Pipeline money, if it was something that you purchased or didn't purchase, or maybe were authorized to have it and just were concerned about the training issues. And then in the meantime, we can look at what, what those requirements are.
We might have one, Ben. It might be.
All right. So we'll go, I'll go forward with finding out one if we have one and then if we don't, um, I'll talk to Colin and see what some of the requirements are. I know they're registered. All AEDs are usually, and I, when we get into public comment, I'm sure I can get Steven Stewart to help me out with that is, uh, they're usually registered with 911 so that they know where they are within the community.
The other thing is I think another municipality that we represent was able to get grant funding to get one. So I can check with them and see, see where that is.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, number eight, the Upper Delaware Council's River Cleanup. Jane, was that something you had spoken about in previous?
I know I don't do UDC. I did seen it by way, but I think that that's been canceled, hasn't it?
Yeah.
The byway. Yes.
I think they ask people if they'd like to do some cleanup independently, clearly socially distancing. There's no event though, it's been canceled.
I will get this UDC memo that just came out today. I'll get this to the board. But if we can do a resolution, it's priority given to youth and adult volunteers that are involved. They're not 100% sure because of the pandemic, if they're going to be able to participate in this. But they are taking applications through May 22nd. I don't think it would be something that would hurt for us to apply for as a member of the Upper Delaware Council. Unless the board feels that they don't want to get involved with it at this point in time. And it includes agreements for contracted services, trash disposal. And publicity needed to recruit volunteers. So it's kind of a litter pluck, but more along the river.
You have to have somebody who wants to coordinate that.
And well, you know, we can, in the past, what we've used it as is an actual river cleanup where we can hire one company to do X number of trips down the river to clean it up, or we can use it for such things as making sure that the deck over the observation deck stays clear of litter or our landings, our trails are cleaned and use that as an independent contractor that can bid out on it. I mean, to just look into it farther and see what we can do and bring it up at the next meeting. We should still have probably not enough time to do it.
Do you want to add it on to the special meeting? Does that give you time? Oh, that's even after that. Never mind.
Did the, the board remember previous with Frida Enterprises doing this? Does that ring a bell to any of them?
Crystal shaking her head.
Yes, every year Frida Enterprises has done this for us.
Um, you know what, why don't at least give me the authorization to look into it. See if I can bring something. I don't have time to do it by May if we wrote it out to take, I'll take the authorization to at least look into this and see if it's something that we can do if it's, uh, if we've got a company that we can hire as an independent contractor in this grant in order to, uh, clean up. I know it certainly couldn't hurt with the amount of people that we've got up here right now. Using the Tustin Trail, the DEC access areas.
All right. So you want, I'll move that we authorize the supervisor to look into the possibility of hiring an independent contractor for river cleanup. Is that what you wanted, Ben?
That sounds good.
I'll second that.
I got a second from Jill. Brucey?
I.
Jill?
I.
Jane?
I.
One more, forget Brandy?
I.
And I'm an I. Thank you.
And don't forget, if you need to have a special meeting, you only need 72 hours notice. So.
I'm going to hold you to that. Uh, the approval of the minutes of the March 10th, 2020 regular meeting. Does anybody have any questions regarding the minutes? Corrections, additions, deletions?
No, there were a couple of blanks though, Crystal. You had to fill in numbers, I think. Right?
You're muted.
Who's muted?
I can still hear.
Crystal's muted.
I had to insert the memorandum that you approved under one resolution. That's all.
I just wanted to say thanks to Crystal for doing a great job on the minutes.
Welcome.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10th, 2020 regular meeting. Do I have a second? I'll take Brandy as a second. Jane?
I.
Brandy?
I.
Jill?
I.
Bruce?
I.
And I'm an I. Before we go to number 10. Just a housekeeping point, are we going to keep our regular board work sessions? I know we canceled our last one. What are we going to keep our next one? I would like to. I think it's actually using Zoom. It makes it a lot easier.
And quick.
Okay.
It's a good idea, especially if, if these things are going to be changing all these conditions and you may be able to go back to a different way of having a meeting. So it might be good to keep, keep on top of everything.
Okay. So we'll keep that. Uh, number 10 is the contract. And Jackie did go over this. As far as looking for approval with the con, for with the contract. With care. Do we have any?
Couple of things to point out, if you don't mind. The board, the, the town would have to have a certificate of insurance for both the shelter and the town of Liberty because it's run in conjunction with the town of Liberty. And basically the dogs are treated in accordance with the Ag and Markets Law. There is a, I think it's a $25 per day. Fee for the dog, which if the owner comes to pick up the dog, the owner would have to pay or else the dog wouldn't be released. So the town wouldn't be stuck. So that's probably important to you.
I know that was one of the questions that the board had, had mentioned because I know we need to go back and look at some of our fees that we have. Good at the dogs that he has had that the people are paying before they get their dog back. But that helps that they're going to collect their fees before they release the dog. So.
Has our dog, dog, we haven't seen this.
Jackie has something to say. I don't know if she could, you just said, you just waved your hand. So I don't, I know you reviewed it.
Too late. Now she's got to talk.
She's on mute. She's got to unmute. You got to put your.
Yeah, I think Crystal's on it.
Yeah, okay.
She's right next to Nico.
The, the way I, the way I read the contract, the dog owner would need to pay the fee to the town, get a receipt from the town that the boarding fee has been paid. Go to the shelter, present the paid receipt, and then the dog would be released.
Okay.
So it would probably be a good idea to make sure that your fees are in line with what, uh, what the shelter is going to be charging with $25 a day.
Well, for our next meeting, what we'll do is we'll have a resolution and Nico can work with the clerk in order to get our, our fees and stuff up to date.
Can you explain to the public why this is why we have to do this?
Um, Nico, you can jump in. If not, Ag and Markets actually oversees any townships or Jackie actually be. any townships, or Jackie actually would be probably better for this. Ag and Markets oversees any municipalities that take in or board dogs. And I don't believe, in my conversation with Nico, that our facility, one, is up to what Ag and Markets wants to have, and two, for the money that we have to spend in order to go sometimes three or four times a day in order to check on these dogs that have been taken in. Summertime, we've got a heat issue with where they're at, and the wintertime, we have a cold issue with where they're at. So we don't really have a facility for the number of dogs and the number of days that we've got these animals in town.
And it's the town's responsibility.
Yes. It is the town's responsibility.
So the, the method would be that the, that the Nico would get the dog, put it in our, in our facility, and then maybe the next day or whatever, take it to Liberty?
Correct. And that's what we would be, we would be charging the people for the time that we're charged by Nico doing that, and the mileage of Nico's, and then on top of that, whatever cost we incur with care. Yes.
Am I muted?
No.
Okay, so, um, so I, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm charging $20 per hour, so if I go three times a day, which I would have to, that's $60 a day. Um, I actually just had a dog, and I had, I had held him for five days, so, you know, that math there is much more expensive than bringing that dog to care. For a $250, you know, fee from care versus $300 fee from me for holding the dog for five days plus mileage.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board regarding that? Anyone wish to make the motion to let the supervisor assign the contract for the municipal dog care, sheltering, and surrender?
I'll make the motion for you, Ben, our supervisor, to sign the contract for that.
A second motion from Jill. We'll make a second.
Can I just jump in?
May.
There's a blank in the contract where you, it just came to me, where you have to reserve, where you may reserve a run, which is an additional fee. I didn't know how many dogs that you were having, but it sounds like you have a lot in the summertime or not. I, I don't know if it's necessary for the town to reserve a run. You may want to do that if you're going to have a large number, or even a, more than two, you know? So I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that because I don't know the volume that you have. It's an additional fee, though. Um, I don't have the contract in front of me, I believe.
It's, yes, an additional fee of $200 per month, and that would be something that, uh, as we speak to Nico and take a look at historically what we've been having for dogs, to take that run amount and include it into our other fees for these dogs, we have to house and move out to this facility. So we would be-
I agree.
Recoup some of that $200 per month, per run. If we only do one run, then we can divide that up into our other fees in order to cover.
We can get, uh, more information from the shelter for the next meeting, too.
Do we need to make a new motion, or are we?
Uh, I think you need to move to amend the motion to include one run, if that's what you're going to do, or at the next meeting, you could add a run, but it's really up to you.
Thoughts?
It'd probably be good to hear from Nico.
Yeah. Agreed. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So I think the way to approach this is, um, I would say not reserve a run at this moment, and, and just, you, you, you know, utilize what we actually have until it becomes a problem. I don't think the volume is overwhelming. And I think the cost evaluation may be actually more expensive at $200 a month. At, at this moment, I, I really think it's an extra cost to, um, reserve a run at care.
Okay, and then we can always amend the month if we decide that we need a run.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll leave the motion as it stands. I got a first and a second. Maybe first and a second.
I made the mo, uh, motion and-
I did the second.
Right.
Brandy?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Does the board have any new business other than what was on the agenda that I'm not aware of?
I do not.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Do you want? I don't see mine.
Mr. Stewart?
Okay, we have received a question from Steve Stewart. How will the hydrant affect fire suppression at the Santana Building? The Naresburg Fire Department is aware the sprinkler is directly fed by the main.
I actually spoke with Art Hawker today about that, Steve, um, because it kind of put us in a bad position of what we needed to do as far as what was the greater concern, or what was, what served the greater good, and it was determined the greater good is served by having an active fire hydrant and then getting your suppression system back up, uh, sooner.
I, I agree. So when that is completed, will the, will that main still feed the fire suppression systems, that building?
Yes, it will. What we're going to do is put a, uh, a valve in that can be turned from the curb, so that there'll be no further excavation. They'll just have to, uh, get their inspection done. Once we get the okay, the water department can go in and turn it on, and then they can do their pressure tests as part of the inspection.
Great, thank you.
Okay, do you want me to go through everyone?
Okay, if anybody has any questions, they're, we're welcome to either hit star nine on their phones, or you just raise your hand, and Crystal can unmute you to get your question from you. Uh, yeah, go ahead with that. Bernie Kramer, are you somewhere out there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, which didn't seem like a meeting if we didn't hear from you.
How you doing?
We're doing well, and we're glad that you're here.
I just want to say, uh, you guys are doing a great job, and, uh, we went, when this there was, is over, that, uh, we're, we've been locked in to a degree. Unfortunately, we do have a little room to walk around the back of the house here and not go too far away. Uh, I miss going on Main Street and, uh, seeing all the people I know and saying hello to them, and I just want to, uh, get this over with like everybody else does. Didn't expect. And, uh, I had six kids. I can imagine what it'd be like to have six kids at home with no school. Mission every day. If it was wintertime, we'd be have a, have a real problem, but I just want to let everybody know I miss everybody and, uh, anxious to get back into the street of mains, mainstream, mainstream, and, uh, get back to a, a meeting where we can see everybody and not have to stay six.
Well, we look forward to that, too, Bernie, and hopefully, uh, we'll see you soon. Stay healthy.
You too, Carol.
Any other public comment? Uh, board comments?
Nothing for me. Be safe, everyone.
I, I'm going to take the moment to thank the town clerk for putting this together for us.
Thank you, Crystal.
Yeah, thanks, Crystal.
And for all you're doing, because it's more than just this Zoom. You're doing a lot to keep this town going. Thank you.
Our next meeting will be our-
Hey, Ben, can I say something first?
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanted to also thank, um, Jill and Jane for sewing masks. They're just tireless, and they keep sewing them for people who don't have access to them, and I'm just really moved by their efforts, and everybody's efforts on Main Street, and, you know, wherever food merchants are and our first responders, and it's been a trying time, but, you know, people arise at the occasion, so be safe.
Thank you. And that reminds me, we do have, um, this came out yesterday. Sullivan puts out the call for the Mask Brigade. So anybody watching this, this will be put up on our town website, and, uh, that's asking, uh, tell the people who sew, knit, quilt, and stitch, and putting out a call for them to join the Mask Brigade from the County Resource Commissioner, Laura Quigley. So that will be up there for anybody that's looking for something to do. So somebody like Bernie that's kind of shut in and looking for something to do, he can learn to sew. Uh, our next meeting is our work session, which is the 5th of May, and then we'll be doing our bids, uh, on the 7th of May. If there is no other comment, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jane made a motion, Jill second. Brandy?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the-
Thank you. And welcome home. Welcome home, Susan Mendoza.
Now unmute all.
Thank you, everybody. It's so beautiful to see all of your awesome faces. I miss everyone here.
Yeah, and I'm glad you got-
Haven't had the privilege to meet yet, so.
I'm glad you got home safe and sound.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you so much.
Good job that you all were there.
All right, I'm ending it. Good night, all.
Thank you.